Welcome to the Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 Hanson Select Board Open Meeting. We are in open session and we are welcoming Select Board members back who were reelected on Saturday. I would like to welcome, before we reorganize the board, I would like to welcome our Plymouth County Commissioner Jared Valenzola.
Ms. Green, I'm sorry. I think we ought to start with the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Oh, my God. Yes, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
(inaudible).
So, as you do, they are going to be presenting to the town a check for the ARPA funds that we had applied for that will be partially used for our Pratt Place project.
Thank you, Madam Chair, pro tem. I think is that the right term?
Yes.
A pleasure to be here in Hanson, as always. We're really grateful for the partnership. I'm Commissioner and Chairman Jared Valenzola, and I do send the regrets of Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Handley, they couldn't be here this evening as well as Treasurer O'Brien. We're really proud of the partnership we have with the town of Hanson. Ms. Green and your entire staff do an incredible job. This program can't succeed without the community's participation. And as we've discussed at your last few meetings, which is great that we're able to come before you a couple of times and hopefully some more times with some more money, this has really been for us a great exercise in how multiple levels of government can collaborate and work together to help communities such as Hanson execute these types of projects. You know, one of the things that we've noted with a lot of these federal dollars that come into the state, the state manages them occasionally, the money gets gobbled up by the big cities, right? And small towns, heck, medium-sized towns get let by, let alone smaller communities like Hanson. So, before I say anything further, I do want to recognize Al from Senator Mike Brady's office, and I'd like to just say a couple of things.
My name is Jim Brad, I'm Senator Mike Brady's office, and I want to congratulate the board, first of all, for doing a due diligence in order to acquire these monies for this wonderful, useful culvert, I guess, replacement, whereas it can't be repaired. And at the same time, Commissioner Valenzola, Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Handley, looks like Fran Bazla, Lisa Green, Thomas, Tom O'Brien, Treasurer O'Brien, Jim Cantwell from Ed Mackey's office, Senator Mackey's office, Mike Jackman from Senator Mackey's office, and again, Senator Brady, Representative DeCoste, and anyway, congratulations again.
Thank you. And we're really proud of that collaboration. You know, certainly Senator Brady, Rep. DeCoste, and before he departed, Rep. Cutler, were staunch advocates of the town, and of course, Senator Brady and Rep. DeCoste continue to be, and we appreciate that partnership. And again, we're really proud of the fact that we're able to collaborate and work together on these funds. We're currently still trending at less than 1% or about 1% administration cost, and I can't emphasize enough, the national average is 7% to 10%.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
That's amazing.
So, we are working, that's part of why Treasurer O'Brien had to go home and get a good night's sleep tonight, because as we're upticking the applications to make sure that we can keep the administrative costs, so that has meant more money for Hanson and more money for the member communities, just for the adification of the board, and Ms. Green's been on these calls. We did extend, the commissioners did extend the deadline for submission from June 30th to September 30th. We are cognizant of that, that's going to mean we're going to be working triple time as commissioners to make sure we get these funds approved and out, but we wanted to give you folks more than enough time to be able to identify what you want to use your remaining funds on and be sure to get those dollars out the door. The program, believe it or not, sunsets December 31st of this year. We have until December 31st of 2026 to expend the funds. For me, it is kind of hard to believe that it's been three years already, but it's been a joy, and again, we can't say enough about the leadership team that you folks have here. So, that's it from me. I'm not sure if there are any questions, if that's appropriate, Madam Chair.
So, I'll just give a little bit more information. These funds here, it's a check for $112,205, and what this is, is this will cover the engineering, design, engineering, study, and all the pre-construction information that needs to happen for the Pratt Place culvert repair.
This was voted in at a town meeting?
This was voted in a town meeting, yes. We did that, and all the application was submitted and was approved. There's two or three levels of approval that the application goes through, so we're very happy to have this and get this project moving forward.
Thank you. Yeah, we're proud, I mean, we do three levels of approval. One of the things that we're really proud of, first with CARES and now with ARPA, is we don't have to acquire any money back. So, one of the things that happened, especially under CARES, is the Commonwealth, and this is no slight, but it's a big state, they would give you the money and then give you the regulations and say, figure it out and make sure it's eligible, and then nine months later, when they got around to doing their due diligence, they'd say, we screwed up, we need the money back. We did not do that with CARES, we're not going to do that with ARPA, and that's the level of approval that we put through. And again, the applications that come from Ms. Green and your entire team here are great. To my knowledge, there are no issues, which is a good thing, because if they reach me, then there's really a problem.
No, and I think your staff's been very responsive and open when Ms. Green has called and had questions, so, you know, we didn't seek forgiveness and not permission, we were trying to get it right out of the gate, so I thank you guys for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to say, a lot of eyebrows were raised when that money was, but I do want to say that the Plymouth County's been doing a great job, and is really transparent about what's going on.
Yeah.
And again, the cost, thank you, way down as close, yet, whatever happened to take their administration, they're going, well, they tried to pull that money back, but.
Yeah, and the previous administration sent CARES money back, so had Plymouth County sent CARES money to the state, that would have went back to the federal government, that would have been less money for Hanson, so we're, I really appreciate that. We're really, really proud of the fact that we demonstrated what we're here for, and as I usually end with, you know, I know you guys had your elections this past weekend, congratulations, mine's in November, we're elected by the same people, we work for the same people, your constituents, my constituents, and the senators' constituents, they all sent us to do our jobs. We believe that the county level is able to pivot, to have that open-door policy for Ms. Green and her colleagues across the county, right? So, you can call us, you're not getting lost in a bureaucratic nor asset at the State House, you have that contact for us in Plymouth, and we're proud of that compliance, not only from our funds, but I know many communities have been able to utilize the compliances that we put in place for the funds that you've received directly from the federal government as well. So, you weren't on your own with those funds as well. You were able to use the county as a resource to ensure that whatever you used your own money on was compliant, as the treasurer likes to joke, and we're very big on compliance, because as I quit, I like what I do, but, you know, screwing up isn't worth a trip to Danbury, so we certainly make sure where, we certainly make sure we are compliant.
I just want to say, it's been very interesting seeing what goes on at the county level now and how things have developed. I like to see a return to more county government and money, and, you know, I think it's a really good thing.
And Ed and I were able to go to the Select Board meeting that you guys had, and we really got a lot out of it. It was great to meet other people from different towns and hear about things that they're doing and hear about what you could do for the town, you know, so there's those scales of economy, we can do things cheaper if we're doing them together. So, I just, I can't say enough about the work that you guys all do.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Do we need any pictures with the check?
Yeah, so we, so.
Pictures with the, that wasn't on the agenda, Ms. Green.
The real money, the real check is being given to Lisa, so that's out of my hands, thanks.
This whole time, I thought that was a real check.
Oh, God.
A new check?
Rock, did you, did you, Lisa, did you want to call for a brief recess, or?
Yeah, do you want to do a recess?
Do you want to call for a brief recess?
Sure. Yes, why don't we call for a brief recess?
Or we could just do it all.
Yeah, just do it all.
Let it all hang out.
Yeah.
Whatever works for you. You're the one.
Yeah, there's five of you and one.
Welcome back. And at this point, we will reorganize the board. At this point, at this point in time, I would like nominations for Chair for our Select Board.
I think Mr. Weeks wanted to make a statement.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't sure what the appropriate time was, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Weeks, we will allow the statement, however, please be aware, this was not on the agenda, so there will be no deliberation, no comments, no questions.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm doing this because I feel like it's the right thing to do. Quite frankly, I have to own it up. So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I didn't want to create a prepared statement only because I felt like it wasn't going to be genuine if I did that, and I felt like you're just kind of coming here and saying it. It's more like speaking from the heart, and that's really what it comes down to. For those that don't know, I made some really stupid comments on Tuesday, referencing and making incredibly hurtful comments into Selectmen George's credit, called me out on it in real time, and, you know, I made comments about Bruce Young, a citizen that's dedicated a significant amount of time and energy to advocate and give his time selflessly to the community, and I made stupid comments. I'm not here to justify it, I'm not here to make excuses or do anything other than acknowledge my mistakes. I had made comments that were, I can't even say that they were necessarily wrong, they were terrible comments that nobody should say. Bruce, I am apologizing to you directly, I'm apologizing to your family, I'm apologizing to anybody that was rightfully offended and upset by that, that is out of character for me. Anybody that knows me knows that I am not someone that does that, and I will try to do better. I am not kidding when I say that my kids watch these selectmen meetings, and I hold myself to an incredibly high standard, and in that moment, I 100% did not, and I would be very upset if I found out that somebody else did that. So, again, I apologize to everybody here, the staff. I did not want to create a situation in which the Select Board was turned into a circus or put undue stress on all of you as a staff, as a board, and I really do feel bad, I feel terrible about it, actually, and I hope, Bruce, that you accept my apology, and we can find a way to kind of move through this, because it means a lot, and you didn't deserve it. You didn't deserve it.
I'm not chairing at least, and I think she said we weren't posted to deliberate, but Bruce wanted to.
I've been waiting for weeks, of course, I haven't prepared a statement, and I apologize after the next statement. Thank you.
And again, there will be no.
This is why we have no open comments.
No questions, no comments, no deliberations.
Can anybody, can anybody hear me okay? Okay. This whole experience of hearing and trying to understand an elected official who should know better, who made a totally outrageous and unconscionable death wish statement directed at me after the May 14th Select Board meeting in front of all of the members of the board and also the town administrator, executive assistant, and their administrative assistant, has been upsetting and troubling to me for the entire week leading up to today. I've been racking my brain to come up with an answer as to why anyone, especially the vice chairman of this board, would make that kind of unconscionable statement, and I have come up with nothing. So, it's obviously up to Mr. Weeks, if he can, to tell us, if he can, to shed some light, some personal insight into it. First of all, I want to thank all of the kind Hanson residents who made comments, who called me, and made comments on my behalf, expressing their displeasure and outrage about the statement, and thanking me for all of my efforts in serving this town faithfully on a volunteer basis for almost four decades, and for doing my best to continue to keep them informed about important things going on in our town government. There are many, including my attorney, who would like to take this matter further and have other actions taken against Mr. Weeks, other than just having them having to make a televised apology before the board and those present tonight, as well as the cable audience at home. But keep in mind, outrageous behavior and words like that coming from a public official come with a price in the form of a stain on and a reflection on your reputation for the remaining time you are in office, and I'm sure Mr. Weeks realizes that, and has suffered with that fact, trying to come up with a suitable way to address it and address that fact, and how he would respond this evening. He has to live with it, not me. That is why I have chosen not to take any further action on this issue or go forward with a petition drive that I had started to have the signatures to demand his immediate resignation for conduct on becoming a member of the Select Board. The Select Board, myself, Mr. Weeks, and everyone else in this town have bigger problems and better things and happier things in life to do than to have this problem still hanging out there like a storm cloud. So, Joe, at this time, I accept your apology, and I thank you at this time, and I think it's time to move on. That is all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Members of the Select Board, at this time, it is time to reorganize. I will accept nominations for Chair of the Hanson Select Board.
I nominate Laura to be the Chair.
I second it.
A nomination for Laura Fitzgerald Kement for Chair. We have a second. We have a vote?
We have to aye, is it a roll call?
A roll call vote.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you very much.
Congrats.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your confidence, and let's get down to business. Okay, all right. Okay, so with that, I will entertain a nomination for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Ann Green for the Vice Chair, if possible.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Then with that, roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. And then I will entertain a motion for a clerk, and I know you guys are going to arm wrestle over this, because everybody loves that clerk job.
Nominated.
I, I, I already did it.
I nominated it.
Do you want to do it? Do you? Do you want to do it?
No.
Do you feel passion in your heart to be the?
I don't know what the passion is on the other end of the table.
Well, your reading skills.
No, that's fine.
I'll accept the nomination.
Okay, all right, great. All right, great. Any further, any other nominee? Okay. Roll call?
Aye.
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 All right, let's get down to business. All right, well, look at that, we've already downed three items on our agenda. Okay, so next up is discussion regarding May 18th ballot results for override, which we already did, it didn't pass, I'm not sure really, we probably just need to eliminate that, Ms. McDowell, because no need to relive that experience over and over again.
Do you think that people are going to want to know?
Well, we did discuss at the last meeting what our next steps were, but fair point, we could go over it.
Repetition is key.
Yep, so, so, May 18th, so at our May 6th town meeting, the override did not pass. At the May 18th ballot, the override did not pass, so effectively, the override question is dead, okay? So, it was dead as of Saturday. So, that, that means that we've got, I think last week, we talked about that there were potentially only so many paths, that's one path that has been eliminated from the map. So, now, what we have before us is a question of how do we fund that delta between what we had budgeted for and what the school assessment was that they reconsidered after our May town meeting? So, we got the assessment once, town meeting, you know, the override didn't pass, we went back to the school committee with the results, school committee took the, took that under advisement, and were asked to reconsider, they reconsidered, they came back with that same dollar amount, so we're in the same position that we were in, but without any method of paying that difference. So, our options are, there's really not a huge variety of options, and again, saying no by the Select Board isn't on an option, we have to take some action, we have to present something to town meeting, or de facto, that assessment is in place and we just don't have any method that the voters have voted on or anybody's voted on to pay it. So, it would be like being presented a bill without any way of paying it. So, at town meeting, we have only so many ways that we're able to pay this bill, and that would be drastic, across the board, cuts to staff, you know, cutting all kinds of departments, cutting personnel, using some free cash and maybe less drastic cuts, using a little more free cash, and even less drastic cuts, and then using all free cash. So, those are our, those are our sort of possibilities. So, we're currently at a place where our FINCOM has not yet voted, so we don't have any recommendation for us to respond to. We set the date for our special town election to be June 17th at 6:30. There were some suggestions that in anticipation of a very large group of people showing up, that perhaps we ought to move the meeting to the high school. Ms. Green is looking into legally whether we're able to. There were some exceptions made about the location of a town meeting during COVID, and we took advantage of that because we had that outdoor one, but we're not sure whether there is still an exception. We believe that that exception is no longer available. That said, in the past, when we anticipated that there would be a high turnout at a town meeting, we were able to configure the gymnasium to have a television screen and to have a teller in that room to take questions and take counts and all that other stuff. We were caught flat-footed at the last town meeting, we didn't anticipate that number of people, and we need to do better. So, we, as a preliminary matter, we're planning on having it at the middle school, but expanding that capacity so that we've got the gymnasium and we've got that in place, and we'll have plenty of printed materials for whomever shall show up there. So, that's kind of where we're at now. You know, we've got Ms. Green and Finance Committee and Mr. Kincher all kind of looking at, you know, are there positions that we shouldn't fill that are open right now? Are there positions where we can cut hours without drastically impacting the services that we're able to give people? You know, just literally every little stone that can be turned over, we're looking at that, and I think I mentioned at the last meeting, but there was some notion that we had $1.4 million in free cash. We do not. We have roughly $600,000 in cash, and I think you guys heard at our last meeting that our accountant told us that it would be, well, I'm paraphrasing, but essentially reckless for us to use all of our free cash, because that means if anything happens, we don't have any ability to respond to that. We would be left without, you know, any money to respond. So, Mr. Kincher is still working through the numbers, meeting, Lisa and Ms. Green and Mr. Kincher are meeting with all of the department heads that might be impacted. The thought is, it may be a lot of little things that add up to that dollar amount that we need to get to. It may not be any grand gesture, it might just be a lot of little things. Some of it may be free cash, but we're going to try to use as little free cash as we possibly can. The thought process is that at this point, is that at town meeting, there will be two, the question will be structured such that, similar to what we had at our last town meeting, where there will be two options, one of which will be people can vote no, and the other of which will be people can vote to fund that difference with the various budget cuts that we will explain, and which we don't have right now, so I can't even get into detail, we'll be irresponsible to talk about those. But, you know, with the line by line of where the budget will change from what town meeting voted to what we will have if we pass that use of those one-time monies and cuts and all of that. Ms. Green, am I missing anything on that?
No, that sums it up. We do have a copy of the warrant here for the board to sign. I do understand the board is meeting next week, so if the board chooses to review this and sign it next week, they could certainly do that.
Okay. Now, one other thing that did come up, and I just want to mention it because I've had a couple of people reach out to me. So, the way that the school budget and school assessment is done, it's based on an estimate of what the school believes they will get back from the state, and every year, it's a bit of a crapshoot. Sometimes it's lower, sometimes it's higher, it's the best guess that the schools can do based upon, you know, there's some factors that go into it. So, this year, the budget was based upon a $30 reimbursement per pupil and a 70% reimbursement for busing, and right now, both the House and the Senate have passed 104, there's still a lot of steps to go, and I'll mention that, $104 per pupil and an 84% reimbursement. That roughly translates to about $190,000 Hanson-related money, however, that is not a for-sure thing. There are conferences that need to happen, there are other conversations that need to happen, it's not on lockdown and it probably won't be until July or mid-July. I called Senator Brady today to get a sense from him on timing, and sort of said, is there anything you can do to speed that up? But he's only one man, and he really can't do much, the, you know, things need to go the way that they go. So, I just mentioned that because I had a couple people reach out to me about it, and I wanted, I wanted everybody to know we've thought about that, and I did have just a one-on-one conversation with the Chair of the School Committee. She doesn't speak for the rest of the, you know, School Committee, and I don't speak for you guys, but just sort of, I just wanted to get a sense of, you know, where she thought they might be at with that, and she didn't feel comfortable because it's not a sure thing. But that did make me think, perhaps we ought to look at the timing of everything, town meeting, all kinds of other things, because if we know that those budgets don't get set and the numbers don't come, then the schools have got certain timings that they're under. I don't know if we'll ever get to a point where we can have town meetings so late that we'd know those numbers, but there's got to be a better way of doing this than like everybody just throwing a dart at the wall and hoping that they're getting roughly the right number. So, I'm sorry if I digressing on that point, but I did want you to know that, you know, we've asked the question, we've broached the subject, and at this point, just because it's not a sure thing, you know, I don't think anybody feels comfortable acting on it. So, I just thought I would mention that. Do anybody have any questions about that? Ms. Green?
I would like to just point out that our Superintendent Jeff Simonak is in the audience.
Did you want to chime in on that?
I could, a little bit of that.
Do you want, I mean, I hate to make you take the Inquisition chair, but.
Just be speaking.
Wait, we'll ask you where you are on the night of the 5th, and then.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you for acknowledging me, Lisa.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, one of the pieces too, and I'm going to say this publicly out there, we don't have those numbers.
Right.
Looking current.
Yeah.
Last year, we had projected a little bit more, and we came up in August, when the budget came in, August 5th, less, so we had to make cuts on the fly.
Yeah, Beth said it was about 250,000 less.
About 250,000 elves of personnel prior to school being started. You mentioned Senator Brady, and I wish he was here today, there are two bills on his desk right now to increase regional transportation to 100% and to increase special education reimbursement to 100%. Those bills have some teeth, and if people are watching this now, call Senator Brady, call the senators across the Commonwealth to try to encourage that, because that will bring us back or help our cause all the way through. As you know, regional transportation and special education reimbursement are the core of our funding.
Yes.
If we can get more from the state, it will help us out and it will help both communities out moving forward. The challenge, and you mentioned timing, if I don't have a budget in a regional district by July 1st, the Commissioner of Education takes over, and I have no say in what he decides on giving us. It could be a little, it can be even to fiscal '24, I would get an allotment of 1/12th, or he could decide it to be more. We were in this process during COVID in 2020, I went on a 1/12th budget till the end, and it was through no fault of anybody, we had our town meeting.
It was all the timing, yeah.
But those are the constraints around the timing of the budget which are problematic for us. Town meeting in both towns is in May, some towns have it in March or April, but they're not as heavily reliant on the state, and I don't want to say whims of where we are, but the process is, we're step three in that process. As you mentioned before, you're correct, there's four or five more conference committees to go through, and there's objections to that before the governor actually signs the budget.
Yep. So, and I think, so let's talk about the, you know, what we, you know, we're hoping doesn't happen. So, worst-case scenario, whatever, if, let's just say it's a scenario, not worst-case, but if we do not pass a budget at the Hanson town meeting, that is going to fully fund the assessment that we have been given, then it again goes back for reconsideration, and at that point, if the school committee says no, we don't. And at that point, if the school committee says, no, we don't, you know, Whitman voted to fully fund, you guys haven't, we're going to call for a super-town meeting. The timing constraints are such that our super-town, our special-town meeting is June 17th. There's no way that we could time a super-town meeting before July 1st, at which point you must go into the 1/12th budget. So I just want people to frame that mentally, that that's what will happen.
So if we go into a 1/12th budget, because I mean, we talk about it as if it's catastrophic and because it's only happened, you know, very, very seldom. And we talk about super-town meetings as if it's catastrophic. But I don't understand that people understand outside the talking points what that means. So I'm looking at what the bumper sticker is versus what the reality is. Because I know that these guys have asked questions about what the school committee plans on doing. So I plan on, until we come up to this point, really kind of putting it out there and say, you know, what are the options?
So Mr. Simonak, I think my understanding, and I know you said that there's some wiggle room by the commissioner, but my understanding is that essentially you would be put on the FY 2024 budget, which would be potentially a $3.00 million, $3.1 million.
Yeah.
Less than what you budget.
I want to know what that means though, because I know these folks have that question.
So for me, what it means would be pink slips for staff. As of June 30th, if I don't have a budget going for that, our WHA contract for Unit A teachers and for Unit B is, May 30th is a hope if we have to reduce.
Yep.
June 30th is the reduction date. So if I have to go off of fiscal '24, and I'm just looking at fiscal '20, it was close to 60 people, and we were able to bring all those people back. The challenge is, once you get a pink slip, you don't have a job, and you're also qualified for unemployment.
Yes.
So as of July 1st, if those are 60 folks, they will qualify for unemployment until I can give them a contract. And I can't give them a contract until I have a certified budget, and then the commissioner certifies that.
Right.
So again, my only basis for is recollection from 2020. We had a budget, I think, the 22nd or 23rd, it was right around the end, but then I didn't have a budget from the commissioner until the second week of August.
Mm-hmm.
So some of those folks during COVID were able to collect unemployment. It's not a significant amount of money, but it could be up to, if it's 60 folks, and depending on 40% of their salaries at that monthly cost, it can be in the $80,000-$200,000 range, which is a rough estimate.
And also, you have no assurance they're going to come back. People can look for another job because they don't like the insecurity of, you know, of not necessarily having their jobs.
So that's the reality.
So I appreciate that, and I guess the next step would be, let's say we pink slip all these people, right? Does that mean the problem's over?
I think the problem's not over until I have a budget.
Right. So let's just say we have a budget. What is that? I mean, I know we can't have a crystal ball, so I'm asking these like 30,000-foot view questions that are really unanswerable until we're there. But let's say we pink slip these 60 people, then you get a budget. Can you operate the school with on the $2-point something million shortfall?
I would be.
Without having DESI breathing down your neck in some way or around regulations?
I'm not really sure of the question.
So if you pink slip the 60 people.
Correct.
Right? And then let's say that the town passes a budget, or the region passes a budget.
Correct.
That base levels that budget, that's the new budget. So you're 60 people less. Do we run the risk of any DESI penalties, regulations, or any things around those?
So, no. The only challenge is that once you relinquish your finances to the Commissioner of Education, he can tell you how to spend it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I'm okay financially the month of July.
Yeah.
Because we pay our teachers out kind of a month sum, five months, so the summer helps town through that. It gets a little gray in August if I don't have a budget. What I would do is if, I mean, first of all, you said the town meeting is on July 17th, it passes a budget, I send a contract to all those staff members, they turn their contract back in, we open school with the same amount of staff that we lost with on June 13th. If there are positions that I would have to fill, it would take me time to just fill those positions. There's no knock from the state on this. It's just a matter of, you lose control of your finances, and you have the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education looking at your books.
Yeah.
As far as, this is your July sum of money that you have and their distribution.
Gotcha.
So there's no penalty, so to speak, except human cost and the fact that 60, 50, and it's a ballpark. I don't know how many staff, and when I say professional staff, it's teachers, it's administrators, it's directors, and it's parent professionals. We don't have, bus drivers are on their own contract, and cafeterias are self-funded, so it wouldn't be cafeteria workers. And our custodians are contracted servants. So it's really teaching staff, professional, parent professionals, administrative staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you coming so much tonight. Did you have any questions?
The other thing, they're talking about being on unemployment. Don't they get paid in the summertime or they don't get paid at all?
So.
So it turns to be between their salary and unemployment.
The challenge is, is once June 30th ends.
Yeah.
They're contracted year to year. As soon as I don't have a budget, they won't have their contract.
But if they had a, if we had a budget, they'd still be on contract. My point is that it's the difference, it's the difference between unemployment versus what their salaries are. It's not that we're going to be spending an extra $100,000 for unemployment, it's that we'd be spending whatever the salary line was.
So the salary lines are paid for in FY '24. So as they walk out the door, their salaries are paid for. The challenge around unemployment, and this is what I learned during COVID, was the day that a teacher doesn't have a contract, they're eligible for 40% of their salary going forward.
Right.
So some would call that double-dipping because they've already gotten paid, and we called that, we went to unemployment about that over that summer and lost. So that's what we learned, and, you know, so it was because they don't have a contract and they're not guaranteed employment as of the start of the school year. So we learned a lot during that timeframe just because of that situation.
Yeah. Okay, well, I mean, who knew COVID was good for something? We learned about the unemployment stuff, I guess. Mr. George, anything?
I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out why 31 people were hired with one-time money.
I'm not here to answer that question, sir. I apologize. That will be a school committee question and.
Okay.
Yeah.
I find this the only question I got.
Sure. I appreciate all the time and energy that you've given us. One thing I've seen is we have our, for the town, we list all the employees and how much all of them make so that somebody, anybody can compare year over year and know. The schools just seems like a black box. Is there anything that we could expose something like that?
So I think all our salaries are listed in the town report.
To the town.
Yeah.
Because in town report, you're.
So the all.
There's a book, right?
All your salaries are in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I.
The one thing we don't include in our budget presentation is line item salaries. You know, my salary is there, it's a public salary. You can request my contract whenever you want.
But teacher salaries?
Teacher salaries are unit salary, and then I have in the town report, person by person. So it's in the town report yearly. The other piece I want to just plug is, I mean, our whole budget process is available on our website. Budget books, everything is there.
We talked about that last week, so for the, you know, for the uninitiated, where would you, is there a particular tab that you?
Yep. WHRSD.org, and then School Committee, Budget Book, everything's there.
Okay.
I think from '21 on, and we try to be as upfront with questions and answers as possible. I know some members of the community have requested the budget book through a public records request, which is great, but it's all there.
Okay. That's great. Mrs. Rain, yeah?
I just have to say, we're looking at cutting staff also. And it just seems to me, and I know you're not here to answer these questions, but it just seems to me that the school committee, the school, they need to look at that themselves and not try to force us to go under this fiscal cliff every year. They were unwilling to change anything, and that, to me, that just hit me wrong hard.
Mr. Simonak is sort of in the same position that Ms. Green is. He doesn't control what the school committee does.
Right, I know. I understand that. I'm passing that message on again.
I did reduce the budget by five. Five staff members have retired and/or decided not to come back. We also used $250,000 of our free cash or our E&amp;D this year to help balance our costs. And we have our circuit breaker account, which is, circuit breaker is our special education funding. Again, 100%, if it comes back, that would be great, another $100,000 to cut that down. And that's paying special education costs of moving forward. I'm in a spot like you were talking about, your free cash. If I have some special education move-ins next year, I'm going to have issues. And just again, for the board to know around special ed, and that's a big topic across the Commonwealth, students who move in with really severe special needs might not come to school in Whitman-Hanson, I have to put them in a residential placement, which could exceed close to $400,000.
And we've had that happen, and it's quite shocking. I don't think people appreciate that one student could cost, I think there was even at a time, there was one that was over $500,000 to the district. So it is surprising. I do want to say that Mr. Simonak did, as you recall, originally that assessment was 10.2, and he very strongly advocated for the school, assured the school committee that there would be no deterioration in educational services or anything of that sort if they came down. Now, I know we're still not happy with where we're at, but I do just want to, you know.
I just have, just one other thing. You got rid of five staff, but they were going anyway. We've got people that don't want to go anywhere that we are going to have to cut.
But again, I just, he is not the school committee.
I know.
The policymaking body is the school committee, and we can certainly try to have, you know, a joint meeting with the school committee or see if the chair of the school committee wants to come that we could talk to. We can, you know, try to open up that dialogue a little bit.
And I would also, had to hear the dialogue around unfunded mandates and laws that come at me, I don't have a choice.
Yeah.
And regulations, and Mr. Weeks is shaking his head knowing special education quite a bit.
I know.
They are challenges, and transportation, and I know Lisa is dealing with transportation that is out of control.
Yeah.
But I'm bound by that, and I've had students who I've had to transport to placements for $500 a day, and I know you have dealt with that. And those are unknown costs, and I'm liable.
You can't punch her for it.
The state says they will reimburse, and I'm not going to throw stones, but when they say it's 100% reimbursement, subject to appropriation, and the appropriation is 64%, it doesn't help me out at all. And then I come to you folks, if you, and again, Chapter 70, you mentioned $104 per student, that's correct. We are on the 30, and where we are in hold harmless again, my Chapter 70 money went up $110,000 from last year. So our budget went up, our costs go up, our salaries go up, our contract costs go up. The state gives me .001, and I have to then come to the towns to say, this is where we're at. Our budget this year, really after the cuts that we made in the school committee, is really up 3.65%. And if you look at local communities or even our own personal budgets, most of our budgets went up over 3%. So that's where I'm at, you know, and I'm answering questions, Mrs. Rain, a little bit, that's where I'm at. The state, we've relied so heavily on the state. I think when I became a principal in 2010, we were getting close to, you know, 53%, 54% from the state. It's down to 42% from the state. So they've asked the towns to pick up more, and the taxpayers are saying we can't, but we want the service. And post-COVID, pre-COVID, we had services that were needed. Post-COVID, they're much different.
Yeah.
Our students are much different, and I'm sure you've seen that as well. And the services that we need to provide are greater than we were prior to. And I know that the townspeople like our schools. We do a good job. We put kids where they want to be, whether it be in the IVs, whether it be, you know, vocational program or in the service. We provide good citizens, I think, over the tenure that I've been there. And that's all we've asked, is the support of the communities. And I know Ms. Kempin and I have talked a long time, we always get it done, it's not fun, and maybe at some point it will be an easier year, but there are a lot of factors working into this year, and the state not being able to support the way we want. And again, if they came back with $300,000 in February, we might not be having this conversation.
Exactly.
And that's not.
And, you know, and I know we were a little prickly tonight, but we do want to see you more often, and we appreciate you coming. Did anybody have any other questions for Ms. Green?
If I may, Madam Chair, I just want to kind of build upon what Superintendent Simonak said about like the unknown costs, because the town was directly affected by that. When there was a situation of a student was removed from home in Hanson, placed in a completely different community, and it was the town's responsibility under the law, required by law, to provide transportation for that student from that community to the school.
No matter where they looked.
No matter where it was. The state said, we don't care how much it costs, you pay for it. And it was $63,000. So, you know, that really gives, hopefully, people an idea of.
And that's just one student.
That's one student.
One student.
That's just the transportation.
And that was just the transportation. We were required under law, the state said, we don't care what it costs, you find the money, take care of that student. So that's what the schools face, and so just kind of elaborating on.
Multiplied by.
Multiply that, so.
And it's not common, but it's more common than I'd like to say.
Well, I told Lisa, I should just quit my day job and go into transporting kids to school. I mean, for that kind of money, it was ridiculous, but, yeah.
And anytime you, if I can help, I'm more than happy to come to a board meeting, and I welcome you. We're meeting again on June 5th. And I know that's prior to your town meeting, but we're meeting again on June 5th.
Okay, well, did anybody have any other questions? Thanks again, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Very much.
Thanks. Okay, so.
We're all gloss over, it's inaugural announcements.
Oh, Ed.
I know, I feel.
This is your premiere debut. I'm sorry, Ed, that we gave you short shrift. Okay, Ed, please.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hill, please. Public announcements in upcoming meetings.
Thank you very much for entrusting me to this role. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees. Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, McQuan Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Recreation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website at www.hanson-mass.gov or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. On May 27th, the annual Memorial Day celebrations will begin at 9:45 at Indian Head Elementary School with a brief ceremony and lowering of the flag to half-staff. The parade will proceed to Fern Hill Cemetery, stopping along the way to Town Hall to lay a wreath at the Civil War Memorial. At the cemetery, the ceremony will include opening and closing prayers, readings of the Governor's Proclamation, and of veterans' names who passed this year, as well as a guest speaker. Following the ceremony, at 12 o'clock PM, the Hanson American Legion Post 226, located at 92 Robinson Street, will host a luncheon for all Memorial Day attendees. This is a reminder that all elected boards, committees, commissions must reorganize at their first meeting after town elections and report that reorganization to the town clerk's office. Upcoming meetings for the Select Board, May 28th, 2024, June 11th, 2024, and June 17th, 2024. Thank you very much.
Well done. Let's get the voice for the radio.
Yes. Madam Chair, if I may, may I possibly request to take an item out of order? Item number nine, which is the Old Colony Planning Council McQuan TIP Program Discussion.
Certainly, yeah.
We do have members here.
Well, that said, we hadn't quite gotten to the communication plan for the, for our town meeting, and then we can certainly jump ahead to that item. No problem. So what is our communication plan? How are we going to let all the voters, wherever they may be, and however they may get their information, know about this and arm them with the facts that they need to make a decision that they're going to feel good about?
So our office will have it on our Facebook. It will be on our town webpage. We will have all the signs out front here with the information on it. We will put a public announcement in the Whitman-Hanson Express. And then we will have copies of the warrants out there, and we'll just keep talking about it every week until the June 17th arrives.
Okay, well, we will look forward to that, Ms. Green. Okay, well, we will look forward to that, Ms. Green. Insert heavy sarcasm. Okay, so that will, thank you very much. So that will bring us to the OCPC McQuan TIP Project Discussion. And Ms. Green, you know better than I do who is here, I believe. We've got.
So we do have Mary Wildon here.
Yep.
From Old Colony Planning Council.
And.
I'm the chair of our board.
And Becky, Becky Coletta, yep.
And then we do have joining us Charlie Kilmer.
Nancy Aronson.
I think we're going to be coming in through.
No.
Okay.
Okay, great, well, welcome. We're thrilled to have you. I didn't recognize you, Mary, because the last time I saw you, you got new glasses. I know. It threw me off.
My daughter keeps yelling at me because I said it accordingly.
Looks very nice. It looks great. We love it. We'd love the look, Mary. You get two thumbs up here.
We bring in Charlie and Bill. Excuse me, but I have the opportunity, if I could.
Please, please.
This is just a little bit of a background about Old Colony Planning Council. It has a bit of a profile about the town. I have a coffee.
And so, Mary, do you mind kind of letting, letting, hopefully, everybody on our board knows, I believe they do, but, you know, the average person out there may not know, what is the Planning Council? What's Old Colony Planning Council? What do they do? You know, that type of thing. Can you give us a little, little primer on that?
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. And I do love talking about Old Colony Planning Council. I started in 2014, but the Old Colony Planning Council is one of 13 regional planning agencies in the Commonwealth. We are about 50, over 50 years old, established. We have 17 communities. Hanson is one of them. You're actually a nice centrally located, as we have held our, our summits here, and we've had office retreats at Camp Kawani. We have staff members from the town. But our, our, what was once only seen as land use planning, this organization has planning across the board, economic development, transportation, sustainability, area agency on aging, and, and, and the, the ability to have a community that is age-friendly. So it covers, we cover just about every element of a community. We are not schools, as what was heard before, but we do cover about what the needs are. Every year, we have relationships, we have meetings with Lisa and two delegates. We have a delegate, Tony DeFrayis, and the alternate.
He just joined us, yep. Yep, that's Tony that there, yep.
And, and, you know, we have the conversations about what the needs are. And, you know, again, right now, we are involved with your master plan. Old Colony Planning Council has been, is leading the consulting and working with the town public meetings. I think you've had folks like Rhiannon, and as well as Lori Muncy. So Lori Muncy used to be your town planner years ago.
Yep, she was, yep.
So that's it in a nutshell. What I have before you is just a little bit of a snapshot of who we are. This is for you. I'll share with Lisa the PDF file of this, so it will, you have it in there. But inside this document, you'll see your community profile, which is data about who you are. And again, we get this information from the census, but we put it together in a nice little package. But it also gives you some ideas about our acronyms that unfortunately, we as a regional planning agency and state agency, we use them because many of them have long titles. But the idea, again, is just information. We, the economic development arm of our organization has really built itself up. We are working with the federal government, with our federal partners. We just hired a, someone to work on grants. Paul O'Mano is a, he used to work for the city of Brockton, so he's literally just about four months new, and he already has been reaping lots of great benefits for us. So we will, at a, at a later date, because I know we're here to talk about the, the TIP, but this information for you, as well as for the others in the community, are all in here. And I don't know, Becky, if you wanted to highlight anything.
The one thing I would highlight that's happened in the last year is the water study. So, the regional water study. So when I was in Hanson back in 2004, we were looking at.
Excuse me a minute, we had a Star Trek moment. What is going on with the reverberation?
I think I sound kind of. I'll put my glasses back on, maybe.
Okay, let's, let's try. Yep. Let's try one more time with feeling.
So back, back in 2004, we were looking at Mont Ponce Pond and the use of water for Mont Ponce Pond by Brockton. And, and that was one of the things we were working on. Since then, the state legislators have reinvigorated the Plymouth Central Water, the County Central Water District Commission. It's the longest title ever, but it's a statutory title, so you can't change it. And that was designed to have all of the towns have a say.
Excuse me.
You don't think it's.
It does sound like you.
That's like the next elimination point, right?
Like, you shouldn't have controlled and moved everybody.
Rob, do we have any idea what might be going on here? I'm going to call in brief reset.
Well, welcome back, and thank you for the standing occasion. So, this is what I was going to say.
So what I was going to say is that we've been having that tussle with Brockton around water usage and how the Mont Ponce Pond water has been stored and utilized because it feeds Silver Lake and the Brockton Water System. And that, in Pembroke, which is where I live now, became an issue, and the, there was a lot of question about who was using what water.
Yes, yes.
And also, when people talk about growth, they say, well, where's the water going to come from if we have more growth?
Yep.
Both commercial, residential, and not just in Hanson, but throughout the South Shore, and for the entire region. So Mary and her staff worked with the Economic Development Agency, with Senator Brady's office, and with the Plymouth Central Water Commission, whatever their name is, and they came up with a million dollars, including $450,000 in an EDA grant, coming from the federal government, to do a regional water study. And it's, you know, there aren't a ton of these out there where you have separate municipalities controlling water supply, but water doesn't respect town boundaries. Watersheds don't respect town boundaries. And so this is a comprehensive water study of our region, being conducted by CDM Smith, with participation from anyone who wants to get involved from any of our 17 communities, and groups like the Jones River Watershed, who are coming in to give perspective of, okay, let's not ruin the environment while we're at it. Let's look at what's sustainable. And so that work is ongoing. So there's work that OCPC does, both to support each individual community and to support the region as a whole. And I just think that's an important distinction, because even when we look at transportation, part of the issue is that Old Colony Planning Council is tasked with being the, we host the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Very good.
The MPO, and the MPO is what makes those decisions around how the Transportation Improvement Program will be run and funded, and how that money that's coming from the federal government through the state, with some state money, is going to get divvied up on the projects of greatest need. Most of us, you know, leave our communities. So the, the, the infrastructure of the, of the region as a whole is important, but we also want our own local projects to get funded. And so that kind of is where we're balancing, making sure the money gets used in the region with making sure that it gets to every town project that wants it. And I will say, when I was sitting on the MPO, and the issue of Route 14 came up, I'm kind of sensitive to this issue because I travel from Pembroke to Hanson on Route 14 all the time. My office is here in Hanson. My house is in Pembroke. Friends are here. And certain times of the year, you go through that flooded part of Route 14, and it's hard, you know, and you kind of, it's a little dangerous. So it's not an unimportant project, but we did also have a project this year in another community that was on the tip, but some of the engineering went a little awry and went a little off. And we may have lost some money for the region.
Well, so, I think.
So that's why.
Not everybody may be aware of what that, what, so we.
So now we've got Charlie. I was going to say, so if I could do this, because I know I gave you a packet of a whole lot of information about Old Colony Planning Council, generally. What I'm going to offer to you is this. Take a look at that information. Get through it, and then pull some questions together separately about Old Colony Planning Council. But for today, because this is what we were called for, I think what's important is Charlie's going to run through just a little bit of, just a little bit of history about, and some timeline about this project, and then, again, maybe potentially offering some suggestions about what some next steps will be. So I'd like to turn this over to, so Charlie Kilmer, he's my deputy director, in addition to, he's a transportation program manager. And Bill McNulty is the principal transportation planner. Both of them work on the transport, on the, on the metropolitan, I was going to say the Transportation Improvement Program. So Charlie?
Mary, good evening, so, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this project. Just some history on the project. All of the projects that are eligible for coming today have to be reviewed by MassDOT. They have a project review committee, and once that happens, they're issued a six-digit ID number, and the project in question, Route 14, Mont Street, received approval in 2017. And our understanding is that the town gave environmental partners to proceed with the design, and the 25% design submission was submitted in January of 2020. All of these projects in the TIP, they go through the same design submissions, 25, 75, 100% final design submission. All of these projects, in order to be ready to go, they also have to have a secure right-of-way certificate, have to have all environmental permits in place. Since that design submission in 2020, there have not been additional design submission since that time. Along those lines, the issue of the water main, which I'm sure everybody in the audience is well aware of, came to light in early.
I, I would not assume that. Mr. Kilmer? Mr. Kilmer?
They can't hear you.
Can you, can somebody tell him? We were not necessarily.
Charlie, Charlie, if I can interrupt, the, the chair had a point that, I know we're trying to get to you. Hold on one second.
My mic is back on.
Mine's off. It's off.
So, so the question was, I'm not, it wasn't really a question, it was more of a statement. I think there's an assumption being made that everybody who's watching this would know what the McQuan Project was, and that the, what the water main issue would be, and that everybody on the board would know that. And people have got various degrees of experience on the board, and, and people watching may have not known anything about this. So I think we need to talk about what the project was, what the water main issue was, and all of that. And we do have our town planner here, so I don't know if that would be better. Tony, hate to put you on the spot, but I know you.
And Charlie, I don't know, did you, were you able to hear that, Charlie?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Can you repeat, Lisa? Because you're closest to the computer, please.
Charlie, what we would be, just looking for is a, just a, a history on the McQuan TIP, and then when the water pipe issue came to light.
Well, I'm, I'm not necessarily looking for Charlie to do it. I'm saying that we've got our town planner here, and we have you here, and you both know what that, what that history is. So I'm asking if one, somebody from our team can give that layup so that Mr. Kilmer can talk about his piece.
Yes. So the McQuan TIP program, the town was accepted into the program, I believe, in 2020. And basically, we had environmental partners on board to help with the design of that project. And what the project was, it was a, basically, a, I guess, a modification of the Route 14 from Mont, Mont Ponce Street, I believe. Is that right? From Mont Ponce Street, Route 14, all the way to what one's home?
The Pembroke line.
The Pembroke line, Pembroke line. And during that time, at one point, and I'm not sure exactly what the timeline was, MassDOT came to us, and environmental partners, and made note of the Abington-Rockland water pipe that runs underneath Route 14, that they basically pointed out that the condition of that pipe is unknown, the level of where the pipe is below the surface was unknown. So MassDOT was going to require a SUE, subcutaneous.
Subsurface.
Subsurface utility evaluation be done on that water pipe. The town of Hanson does not own that water pipe. It's Abington-Rockland Water District that owns that water pipe. So we, we ran into a funding problem with that water pipe. And there was a, there was a delay and holdup while the town tried to figure out where that funding was going to come from to, to conduct that SUE.
And you also, I think during that period, had some advice from council about whether or not, at this point, there may be some sort of prescriptive easement that might create some obligations for the town of Hanson with regard to the, with regard to that pipe. And so the question was, where would that money come from?
Yes.
Because even to do the study is $100,000, I think, is the estimate. And Senator Brady was called upon to go in and get an earmark for that $100,000 so that the process could restart with that subsurface utility evaluation underway. And that would give, give impetus to move forward, because you can't define the cost of whether or not you'd have to replace the pipe, the cost of dealing with that pipe until you know what's there. So until that evaluation is done, you can't even define whether there's a cost involved with having to do something with the pipe that's in the ground.
And what's important to understand is, the pipe is, is part of the Abington-Rockland Water District, and they have basically stated on a number of occasions, they have no interest at all in paying for any of this. Because as far as they were, they're concerned, there's nothing wrong with the pipe, and they, they don't have any interest in, in putting forth this money to find out if there's anything wrong with the pipe. So they, they put that entire burden on the town of Hanson.
So if I could, does that give?
That's a great layup. That's awesome.
I would ask Charlie to continue from there. Charlie, can you?
He probably can't hear you.
Lisa, could you just tell Charlie to go to the.
Charlie, can you, go ahead, I mean, you can go ahead.
Thanks for the sound. At this point, we're waiting for the subsurface utility exploration project to conduct it, and to find out the determination of the condition of the pipe, because one of the things is trying to determine how can this pipe be paid for and replaced as part of the project? And how much would it cost to add to the TIP price and get a determination from MassDOT, that would be a participating cost that we could have paid for by the TIP. I don't know if there's a schedule for that to be done yet.
So, Tony, why, so our town planner, Tony DeFrayis, has been in conversations with environmental partners regarding this project, and I, I will defer to him and turn it over to him to give us an update on that.
Okay, so I reached out to environmental partners because we have an earmark for $100,000. So we need to find out what the exact cost of the SUE is going to be. $100,000, let's say, is the starting point. They determined, I think it's more like $144,000 by the time it's all set and done. So we have $100,000 earmarked, the town would have to come up with another $44,000 to cover those costs. And that doesn't include police details. That's just straight, basic, get the work done. This came about, you know, obviously before my time. The water line became an issue because there's a section of the road, that, is it Crest? Crescent and Woodbine, that intersection, there's a crest. And for the sake of safety and sightlines, sight distance, the state wants to lower that section of road. Because of lowering that section of road, you also have to lower the water line. That's where you run into the problem. And they're not budging on any type of change in design. So that section that's going to be lowered will be part of the project cost. But it's the remaining sections of the water line, as you get into removal of the pavement, repaving, the equipment that you're going to use, the age of it, you run the risk of damaging that water line, therefore requiring either repairs during the construction or after the construction. And as Lisa said, so this, this is where you're sort of in a catch-22, because you have, you have someone else's water line in your town, and they're saying, it's not broke, we're not fixing it. And you can't, we have, based on town council, no real legal leg to stand on to force them to fix it. And if the town does go forward with the project and damages it, the town will be the ones who have to fix it. So that's where we stand now. There is a new, it's going to be a new coordinator at MassDOT, and there is possible, and I think it was Charlie and Bill that got this information. and I think it was, uh, Charlie and Bill that got this information, there's, that there may be some potential additional funding that we may, and I'm going to quote, "may", be able to obtain that will help us cover the costs of this, but you can't bank on it. The one thing you can bank on is there's a hundred thousand dollars earmarked, and we have to, we have to get a scope of work so that we can collect that hundred thousand dollars and then figure out the remaining costs, where that would come from. That's, that's basically it in a nutshell, that's where we're at today. Now, we know that, uh, well, county planning council had to unfortunately, we'll say, downgrade our project because of the, of the lack of progress. We're, we're, we're in limbo, you know, and this is a project that's 25% complete.
Because it's competitive, and there are other people who are more ready, and we are not ready.
Correct.
And so I, I...
And not by any fault of our own.
No, it's nothing, yeah, yeah.
And, and if I could, I think, and everybody struggles sometimes with what verbiage to use, so downgrade it may be used, it really is just, it, the project is still on, it has a number, and it's assigned, it's just not ready yet, and we have other projects, so too, Madam Chair, what you were saying. And that's, and we have a timeframe that we have to deal with the funds that come into us and through a process, which is at some point, we're always like, okay, which, where is this project going forward? But, um, and I know that Joe has a question, but Charlie, am I correct in, in that, um, classification of the process?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, Mary. So this project, you know, so it's not in the current funding cycle, it's still technically in the tip, it's still held in federal state funds, and it's coming along to its projects, it's in a little bit of a limbo station right now, and we're just waiting for that to be resolved. And once that is resolved, and we have a path forward, it's most certainly considered for future funding cycles. You know, that's, that's just, um, you know, the path forward that we're looking for. Definitely be considered for future funding. It's just because it's not in the funding cycle right now, because the project is gone for a while.
And Charlie, if I could, there was one other things I, I think I wanted you to talk to, and, um, it's our relationship with MassDOT as well as with the town. So you had a potential, at least sort of the next steps of where we go, right? We, we're not here just to tell, come before you and say, hey, we can't do it this year, but we're always looking and exploring some, um, solutions. So what was, um, the, what we talked about earlier today, Charlie, can you talk about, perhaps gathering another meeting together?
So I'm going to thank you to Tony and our team, so, um, he's looking to, uh, the MassDOT project manager, um, the previous project manager, Sean Holland, retired, so now we have a new one for this project, it's Greg Fraser. So what we recommend is that there be another coordination meeting by, between the town of Hanson, MassDOT, the delegation, and it's, and the environmental partners, much like you had in January 2023, to, um, have both present, talk about the current status of the project and talk about a path forward.
Okay. Um, and I, Mr. Campbell has got his hand up, he's, um, can we acknowledge that? Can, I, nobody can hear me, so...
Joe, can you hear us?
I can, I, I can, I can hear everybody that's at the, behind the table, from the computer, it's very difficult to hear anybody beyond that. Uh, thank you to the chair, uh, to, 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 Tony, I do know, there was some questions regardless of whether or not Abington-Rockland could kick back, and even give the authorization to work on that, have we gotten past that rule?
Uh, authorization to what, do the SUE?
If, if, if it proceeds forward, I do think that Abington-Rockland is the beginning of basically putting out a, you know, don't touch the pipe.
Well, the S, the SUE is not going to physically touch the pipe. The idea is for the SUE to do a vertical and horizontal location of the pipe. They, they will be able to get some information to determine the condition of the pipe in certain areas, but it's not, but it's not a case of, uh, it's an exploratory, touch the pipe and, and cause any damage.
So for the uninitiated, SUE is...
The subsurface utility evaluation.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Hill?
And, and this, and the...
You'll have to talk to Lisa.
And the, Mass DOT is requiring this of all these types of projects, especially now, because of the money they're spending. They, you know, you're spending a lot of money to redo a road and utilities, and you want to make sure that after you spend all this money, you're not going back in and chopping up the road because a water line's damaged, or a gas line. So they're requiring this of all their projects with that, and, and it started up, I believe it was last year.
And we get that, but the thing is, is, um, that, um, we really had wished our engineering firm had, like, the ideal thing would have been for us to catch that before it went to the state, so like, the, our, doing our due diligence to think about that, um, and there's nothing we can do about it now, but that was a pitfall for the unwary that hopefully we'll just kind of keep in the back of our mind in the future. Mr. Hill, um, I, are you, who are you addressing your question to, because I'm not even sure...
I, I think I'm addressing it to everybody for the most part, but I'll lean over here, so hopefully people on the, on the Zoom can hear also. To the untrained eye, I know where this, this hill is, that, that, the view of the problem, I look at it as a, I'm totally an, not an engineer, I say, leave the hill where it is, build up on either side of it where you're talking about there being flooding because it's too low. I mean, why is the state just giving us this one option where we have to dig down? Why can't there be another option where we build up where there is already flooding to avoid this flooding? I mean, that's...
So I, I think there are a couple things, and Charlie, you can give a more technical response, but I've been trying to listen to this discussion as a layperson, the way you guys are. I mean, I'm just a delegate from Pembroke, right? Um, who has to, now that I'm president of the council, I sit on these meetings, so I, I'm trying to translate, right? And I think the answer is that at this point, all roads are going to have to have this kind of utility analysis. It's just, this is a particularly tricky utility analysis because of a hundred-year pipe that belongs to a different town. And so I think that's what's making it more convoluted, but I think what they're finding is that if you're going to put $10 million into a project, and this isn't just to resurface it, it's to actually re-engineer it. But I can't tell you without sitting down with the engineers why they want to reduce that crest, and it may be that they're going to reduce the crest and build up somewhere else. Charlie, do you know the road well enough to know?
I'd have to check back with the 25% design and why they actually came up with the amount that they're looking to change the vertical elevation. But it could be, it's to some safety and starting and stopping on a hill and to help reduce some of the flooding, could be that they're looking to change the elevation of how they're going to, too. Right, I think that's a, an opportunity to, as you said, to engage the, the designer and the engineers to, to run by guidance on how we got to this point and how they're being responsive from MassDOT, your work is...
Mr. DeFrayis had some thoughts on that.
I posted that question to the Mass DOT.
Okay.
Because I went out there and I designed roads, too. And I sat there and said, okay, I see what the problem is from one direction versus the other. And I posed the same question, so why don't we just do something a little different? And it's basically like, well, you know, it has to be this way because blah, 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 you know, because I was just like, okay, so we just...
So engineering seems to think they need to do it a certain way, and...
So, so I do think that's the need for us to get back together again, these same questions, right? So we've clarified that you still, this project still is part of the tip process, it's just not in the funded for this year, but we now know what needs to be done. Bringing, as Charlie had recommended, um, and Bill McNulty, let's bring the parties together, let's ask those questions, let's ask the engineering part of it. I'm not an engineer, and I will never want to be, you don't want me to be. But my point, though, is in, in getting folks to the table, so we get that part cleared up. And then quite frankly, the other piece, whether it's the Abington Water District, Regional Water District, so it's not even the town, it's a regional water district, a separate entity that owns it, so I want to make sure that part's clear. And, and let's, we, we can try to figure that, that crosses over regional planning agencies, and perhaps we can reach out to our partners to say, hey, who do you work with on this project or have you? And let's bring some folks together. So it's, it's, this is most important, bringing back about the design, the engineering piece, to get some answers, and then, um, along with your engineers, to see what...
So we've hit a bump, we're not dead in the water, we just need to get back together and strategize about how we move forward, what we can do to meet the state's requirement, given the constraints that we have.
Well, I mean, one benefit, obviously, is the fact that we did receive an earmark for a hundred thousand dollars, that's a good start.
It's a good start in that we're not paying out of our own pocket for the study.
Just to, just to find out what's there, right?
Yes, yep, yep.
Yeah, the unfortunate part is hindsight is 2020, yes. From an engineering standpoint, day two, someone should have asked a question and found out, because if they had said, we're not going to fix it, we're not going to do anything with it, you may have considered moving on to a different project.
We probably would have.
Or move the money somewhere else for another road. Uh, now, obviously Hanson has this water line going through, and you have, what, two lines from Brockton going down Main Street. So let's say you had shifted to Main Street, you might have been in the same situ, similar situation, if, if they said, well, we're not going to fix it, though a city like Brockton may have more funds to replace the money.
Yeah, but I...
Should we have moved it somewhere where you didn't have the problem at all?
But I, you know, playing the devil's advocate, if I'm Abington-Rockland, which it's a little bit nervy, because they are coming through our town, but, you know, they're probably doing capital, um, you know, improvement plans, and this isn't on their plan to do anything with that pipe, you know, they've got whatever, water mains in Abington and Rockland and whatever else they're doing that needs to be fixed. So I get where they're coming from, but I just hope that there could be a little bit more spirit of cooperation and kind of looking at the bigger picture. So I love your thought process, that you might be able to work as sort of a little intermediary, bringing parties together, getting in conversation, um, I think that that's a wonderful place to go, so...
And if I, you know, and just one thing before I have to, over to Becky, but we're not going anywhere. We are actually becoming more and more engaged with so many different projects with the, with the town, the green communities, along with the master plan, you name it, there's a, there's the Safe Streets For All, um, that bill, it's, it's, it's a large sum of money that we're looking at, safety, so we're here. We just want to make sure that we come in where we need it, we stay out where we're not, and figure out some other things as, as some, that's why we have a full-time grant person again on staff, so then if this isn't it, then we'll figure out some other way. Becky?
I was just going to say, the fact that there's still a tip number is also important because that means DOT can be part of these conversations. If there wasn't a tip number, if, if it had been delisted from the tip, then it, you know, we'd be working on our own. But Charlie can still work with DOT because you have a tip number.
Okay, that's great. Did anybody have any other questions? I know this was circuitous, but we needed to, um, Mr. Ki, oh, sorry, Mr. Campbell, can you hear me?
Thank you, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, that's one of the questions tonight, we still haven't answered them. So in 2021, the former town planner had reached out and utilized town council in regards to, uh, getting title information, and I, I still to this day don't know if that's ever been discovered, or whether or not there's any title information agreement between Hanson and Rockland, Abington, I don't know if that's ever been established, if any of that information came out. I still have, my other concern is that I don't believe that we have ever been given permission by Abington-Rockland Water to do any work on that pipe, and that's concerning.
Um, Ms. Green, um, said she can respond to that, Mr. Campbell.
So, um, Mr. Campbell, as far as your first question, um, town council did do quite a extensive title search and did not come up with any type of agreement between the two towns, well, the water district and the town regarding this pipe. So there's no agreement. And we had, we did have conversations, um, with the district, with town council present regarding this, this, um, topic. So they are aware that this needs to be done for the project, um, they haven't specifically said, go ahead, but again, we're not touching the pipe, we're just, we're just, um, finding out where, how far below the surface the pipe is, um, and a basic condition of the pipe in the areas of the construction.
But if there's no agreement, yeah.
Correct, correct.
So in the S U E portion of things, is there going to be any coring, MassDOT?
Yes.
Uh, Mr.? Mr. DeFrayis is saying, yes, not into the pipe, but into the ground.
Yes, I, I, I understand, not into the pipe, but a concern that came out back in 2021, what happened to Rockland was that if they're going to core, it's very difficult to core anywhere around the pipe that, you know, where it exists. So how, how close to that pipe are they going to be able to get, to be able to get understanding how much rating they need?
I, I don't know, Mr. Campbell, I think a lot of these are the things that are going to be discussed in this next phase, I, I will just throw out there that if there is no agreement, um, for them to be putting a pipe through Hanson, and they're being uncooperative, it would seem to me as though they don't have a tremendous amount of leverage there. So I just, you know...
But the, but your, the memo I saw from your council talks about a prescriptive easement.
I wondered if that was the case, okay.
Because it's been there so long.
Yeah, yeah.
Any, any, any damage done to that pipe Hanson's would have to fix. Now, to Mr. Campbell's point, I mean, they are aware that we're doing this project, they are aware that we need to do the SUE, but they can be reminded, and as a matter of procedure, give them a formal notice that we, we're going to do this from, whether it's council or the select board, so at least it's an official, he is a certified male, we told you that we're doing it.
I just find it a little galling if there's no agreement, that they're saying, we're not going to allow you to do it, you're not going to allow to, us to do this on Hanson property?
Yeah, I, they, they, there's no agreement that was ever legally, uh, recorded or filed, you know, it may have been, uh, I don't know, it may have been a Friday night handshake.
I can only speculate.
Yeah, who knows? I mean, if you're talking about 1885, I believe.
It's like, yeah, 18, it goes back into the early 18 hundreds.
So, Mr. Campbell, um, I, I hear what your concern is, but I think that that, that those are the types of questions that at this next juncture, um, when there's another meeting of the minds and we bring in that other individual, um, you know, we'll, we'll have Ms. Green, um, I mean, we've done the research, but, um, there's, there's just no documentation, but it doesn't mean that there wasn't an agreement, we just don't have anything recorded.
And, and Madam Chair, my last salvo here will be, we have, our meetings are public, they're recorded, we have, not, our council meetings are open to the public, um, our metropolitan, uh, planning organization meetings are open to the public, there was another acronym called JTC, the Joint Transportation Committee. We bring people from the state, we bring guest speakers in, we bring folks in, um, we'll make sure, I don't know who is on our, our newsletter list, but we'll put you all on our newsletter list, I'll get that to Lisa.
That'll be great.
Um, because that information, we put out a newsletter twice a month, information about grants, what's going on in the area, um, we have 1,600 people that subscribe to, we've had two people unsubscribe over three years. It's a lot of information, and even for today, it's a lot of information, but our staff, Charlie, Bill, our staff, as well as through the chair, um, Tony and Joe, um, and Lisa, I want to, let me, I don't want to, because Lisa's been extremely responsive to us, has been resourceful for us as well, um, there's a lot of great things going on here in Hanson, and we want to be able to be finding our way, working with you, how we can best help you.
Well, we thank you for your partnership, um, we thank you for all the excellent work that you do, um, and of course, we're sending you one of our best, um, representing us, um, and, um, and, you know, and we know, he's pretty good about communicating what's going on. So I think, yes, if you could get the newsletter, that would be amazing, um, we'll, we'll take heed as to the next steps, I think that would be great. And I would, um, also really love to have you come back, um, at another time to talk about what we could be doing with OCPC that we're not doing. So, um, did anybody have anything else? All right, well, we, we thank, thank you guys, um, you know, for attending, sorry for the myriad of technical difficulties and the extremely frustrating experience, but thank you. And thank you so much.
Thank you for taking us out of over.
All right, and, uh, Rob, we're going to take a recess, um, for a brief moment, so we can get back.
Thank you, very nice.
Thank you for all your work, appreciate it.
Okay, fantastic, and does everybody have their mics back on again? Fantastic, okay. So we are now moving on to our select board calendar review and update, so does everybody have that in front of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Mr. Weeks, you said you had a burning desire to say something, but...
Yeah, I've been waiting to talk about this for a while now, because I wanted to try and update this. I think that this year, especially with the budgets and how tight everything's going to be, we've, we've heard all kinds of different scenarios that could play out, and we all know that this is not going anywhere anytime soon, and we had discussed last year, being more diligent, about being more transparent, about having these, these financial meetings. I want to ask that we add additional meetings to this calendar.
Okay.
With this specific intention of making formal requests for the school committee, um, I don't want to have them overlap because we have too much stuff going on that we have to do day to day.
So you're saying, map it out now?
I want to map it out now. I want to map it out now. I want to make formal requests now to have joint, uh, meetings with the school committee. Um, I do think that from time to time and to, to the point made earlier, uh, it's, it's really hard to put somebody on the spot when we didn't provide them an agenda, we didn't provide them any of materials to get ready. They weren't here for this, they did us a, he did, in this particular instance, the superintendent did us a solid by coming up here and trying to do the best they can. But going on record and saying certain things can obviously have some foot in mouth scenarios and make some promises that a person may or may not be able to keep. So, long story short is, I would like to add more meetings to this calendar.
All right, did you have, you, you don't have dates right now, but you're saying like-
Anything that would be, anything that would be a Tuesday.
Okay.
Where we could say, hey, you know, this day, this, you know, whatever the week is.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So similar to how we have like, say, fire department update or like town administrative review or whatever, add something specifically that's saying-
Yeah.
Be with school committee.
I, I think, yeah. And have a joint committee meeting on the books. Um, everybody here has had all these questions they've been asking to the cameras, um, and we haven't had the ability and we haven't, quite frankly, we haven't done a formal request to say, we are requesting you to be here, we'll come to you. And then all of these folks can have their questions ready and we can just have that actual-
Now, are you saying the full school committee or the Hanson members?
Yeah, I have a, a joint, a joint school, a joint committee, yes.
The whole committee.
The whole committee, the whole kit and caboodle.
Okay.
Because they're not gonna, they're gonna, they're not gonna want to meet with just the Hanson. That, that would be, it wouldn't be fair because they're, they're half of the, of the school.
I understand, but they're the ones representing Hanson. So we can't, you know, I mean, we could try to have a full meeting with the, with the, um, school committee. I'll, I'll talk to, um, Mrs. Stafford and see what her thoughts are, but, um, for sure, I think the, the Hanson School Committee, Mr. Hill.
I'm wondering if, if because of that issue, I think, would it make sense or is it too much to have all three committees together that hand, you know, us-
More than one, though. Uh, like to have-
No, when, when they meet, it would be the school committee and the two boards of select.
I don't think it's fair that we ask them to just show up periodically to our meetings. I don't think it's realistic that they say, well, you can come to our open meeting because we're speaking as individuals, we're not speaking on, as, as the board. So I, I am making a formal request that we have multiple meetings embedded in this calendar that say we are going to-
Then give me the dates that you'd like to have those.
Are there dates that make sense as far as budget goes, times of the year?
If you're gonna have those, you need to really start, so it depends on which meeting you're talking about. So October, we're not going to really be, you know, there's not going to be necessarily school items on the budget. But by January, we probably need to start meeting with, with them and talk about what's the direct, what are you hearing, what are you, what programs are you thinking about adding? What, you know, what has changed in your financial situation? Um, you know, have you had special needs people relocating that's going to skyrocket? What, what are your, um, teachers' contract negotiations? What, you know, what are those looking like? Um, those are some, you know, just off of the top of my head.
So, yes, but if you're asking for specific dates, I will, I will offer these specific dates.
How are you gonna make dates without talking to these people?
Well, I'm being asked to make them in the fly and I can't call meetings, Laura can. So if I'm being asked, I'll, I'll throw some dates out, but it's not my, it's not my-
Why don't we, why, why don't you give me, so let's back into town meeting, okay?
Yep.
Um, so we know that we have to- Yeah, so we need to, we need next year's stuff, guys, after one, one-
Yeah, we're in the second half of the year.
So, um, so we, we'd be talking probably like the February timeframe for sure to have at least a first meeting to get a sense of where they're at. Um, you could ask it to have it earlier, you could have one in November just to take a pulse, you know, and then ask for one in, say, like, February, take another check, maybe like every three months or something, and then another one in March because that's when things really start to heat up.
What's stopping us from having a meeting in a couple of weeks to, to address the questions that the superintendent was asked on the fly? Like, why, why are we being reluctant on ask, on setting up a meeting now? Let's just do it.
Well, we-
Because we're talking through, to each other through things, let's, let's have a meeting.
I, I think that, um, when we get to committee assignments, you seem very passionate about this. I'm recommending that you be the school committee liaison.
I will.
No, I'm being a hundred percent serious with you.
No, me too.
Because that's real, that's how this usually happens. It isn't all full boards. It's a liaison goes to, to the, those school committee meetings and comes back.
I'm not the one that has the questions that, where the superintendent was asked.
Do you guys want to have a meeting with the school committee at this point when we've got, we haven't even gotten through the special town meeting?
Right, I think we have to get through the special town meeting first before, in a couple of weeks, that's the special town meeting.
What, where, I mean, David, you had, you're the one who had that question.
I do, but it's like, yeah, I, I wouldn't mind talking to the Hanson side.
You're not the only person who's had the question, I should say. You're, you're, it is the question that people are struggling with is like, okay, we know that that one-time money was used.
We really need to talk to the, the six in Whitman? No, we really need to address the four that we have in Hanson.
No, no, think about the ratio, Dave.
Because I'm sure they can answer a question.
I think that's all of them. I think you have to meet all of them.
We have to meet all of them. We have to meet all of them.
And I think it's every three months and we go back from November.
Is, we only have four votes.
I know we have four votes, but they need seven to pass.
So I just want to be clear, you guys are asking every three months to have a full meeting with the school committee? Is, that's what you guys are asking for? Every three months to meet with the full school committee?
No.
I, I wouldn't mind it.
They're not, I mean.
We can go to them.
I don't know what the, what the ask is. A commu- a regular communication line, and I, I'm, I'm not a fan of open meeting law. I'd love it if we had a, a communication that we could just email each other back and forth, one big email that everybody in the town had read access to. It was an open meeting.
Right now, you're opening law violations that you're suggesting, but, uh, okay.
If we just met with the Hanson side, that would be an open meeting law violation risk for them. So that's not realistic. The reality is, is I'm asking that we have more formal conversations because we've spent-
That would not be an open meeting law violation. You have to have five to have an open meeting law. They can, and if they posted anyway, they'd be fine, but four of them can meet with us.
It, but if they make deliberations inadvertently?
They wouldn't be deliberate, they'd only be talking to us, but they would, they could post, but even if they did deliberate, they can't make a decision because it's only four members, it's not a quorum for that, for that.
Right, but if one of those people calls somebody else, then it's a daisy chain open meeting law violation. I just think it's a, I just think it's easier if we all have a conversation. I don't know what the pushback is on something like that, but we've, we've been having this conversation for a while. We're looking at, to the, to the town accountant's own words, we're looking, this doesn't solve the problem. I mean, we could vote something down tomorrow, we still have bigger budget issues, we have a $5 million override possibly coming down the pike, possibly. Um, this, we need to have a formal school committee meeting.
Is it the full school committee or do you just want somebody from the school committee who can answer these questions?
I'm asking for a full school committee meeting with us.
Okay, because then you're talking about deliberation with the school committee, like I, I-
If you don't want to call, that's totally fine, I'm just putting it out.
Don't, this isn't on me, I'm asking the rest of the board what they want.
You were going where I thought we should go, which is what's, in the February area, when we're starting to talk about budgets, right, is that where you-
I just thought we'd have a three-party, like, hey, where are you guys at? Where we at, da-da-da? Like, each of the, they have school committee, I, I did, in my ideal scenario, we'd have FinCom too, but that would be like absolutely untenable to have five different boards, um, meeting and trying to talk, you know, and get anything done.
Um, and, and the thing of it is that this, this, the 2025 budget, which is what we're wrangling with right now, is, I mean, at that point, you're, you're talking about having a joint me- meeting between Whitman Select Board, us, us and the school committee, like we did before. And I can understand that, that's a good idea to try to wrangle out this thing, but going forward in a planning thing, I think that the February dates, you know, the, the pre-budget dates are-
Right, but it, it would be nice to get the Hanson side of the school committee here just to answer some questions that people have. We're not asking them to make decisions or change anything. We just have some questions that we need answered. If nobody wants to answer that question about 31 people being hired with one-time money, nobody.
Well, I, I do, like, Hil, I, I did have a conversation with Hillary Niffen last week and she, she told me that, um, they, some of those positions were required because of COVID, like regulations-
Oh, COVID's over.
No, but, but they were required not just because of COVID, but, you know, things changed as a result of COVID, so they were required to add some positions. I don't know how many of those, uh, we didn't get into that type of a thing.
Now, money should have been added into the budget. They hired them people with one-time money that was never budgeted into our taxes or into our budget, and I understand it. They don't want to lay them off, they want to retain them. But they, it's, I don't know what to say, it's just 31 people with one-time money. That was money that was given to them, that's like a stimulus check to the, to the school department. You, you're not getting another one, that's it.
I know, you're preaching to the choir, we agree with you.
Unfunded mandates and everything else, I mean, what the state does is what we're wrangling with.
Right, but they could have done something else with that money instead of hiring 31 people.
So I'd like to get something in the books then. I think we're all saying the same thing, so I'm asking, can we put something in the books?
Are you saying that right now, before special town meeting, that you guys want me to reach out to Ms. Stafford and find out if she is willing to have a full school committee meeting with us? Is that what you are asking?
Just outside, just the Hanson side, just to get the, the questions answered. Just to get a few questions.
That's not what Joe's saying, he wants, Joe wants the whole school committee.
I'm, I'm amendable, I just want the conversation to happen. Because we keep kicking the can down the road.
Whitman's aren't going to come over here and, I mean, you can ask them, but I don't think they-
They were here last week, I mean, they were the ones that showed up.
That was the only two of you asking for all of them.
No, we're just one person, but at least they showed up.
Yep.
So I think, I just want, I don't care what the makeup is, to be perfectly honest, all, my whole point is, I want, I want the conversations built into the calendar today so that we or, or just have the, start the conversation today, but in the very near future, let's get a couple of these things in the books so that we can hold ourselves accountable and do what we need to do, because what I don't want to do is in the 11th hour again, have conversations around, are we pink slipping the services, bless you, that we have on our side and not on the operational side? I don't want to have that conversation, I want to know what they're going to do and you guys have been asking the same questions over and over again to no answer. I'm trying to get some answers.
I think that there's two different separate issues here that we're trying to do. We're trying to do a regular, come to, come to Jesus meeting to, to hash things out, but we also have the elephant in the room right now-
Yeah.
-that Laura's talking about.
Well, uh, well, we are having two separate conversations because I, I'm just talking about the calendar.
Yeah, I agree with you.
What the content of the agenda is a completely different conversation, I'm just want to get things in the calendar.
We should put something in the calendar.
At the end of the day, it comes down to this, they say to us via, via their meeting that we're not trying to set up meetings with them, we're saying that we need you to come here and start answering some questions and we're just talking past each other. I want to get something in the calendar, we'll come up with agendas and who should be there later, but in this calendar, which is supposed to be our annual planning, I want to get something in the books, a couple of meetings in the books.
I would suggest, given what I'm hearing, every three months-ish, a suggestion that we put in front of them to at least have the four Hanson votes.
I, I, okay. Uh, who would, who would like to reach out to the school committee members and, and Ms. Stafford and, and ask that question? Who would like to initiate that? Would you like to do that?
You know, the Chair is the one that holds the meetings.
No, oh, no, it doesn't have to be the Chair, we can have anybody reach out and this is your idea, so I think-
And I'll reach out, I'll, I'll schedule, when do we want to schedule some meetings?
Okay, um, so, no, I think you should reach out to Ms. Stafford and ask her what their availability is and whether she can, I mean, we can't just set a meeting without some reciprocal conversation there. So, okay?
Yeah, it's fine with me, get some answers.
And then you can report back to us. Um, okay, did anybody have any further discussion on that? Okay, great. Um, okay, was, were there any other, um-
I just, Lynn, we gotta put the June 17th special time meeting on here.
Good point.
And for, for June, we have the 11th and 25th on the calendar and in the, and we have, never mind what Ann was saying.
11 and 20, what are you saying?
Well, I, I was, I, I saw the seven, June 17th and thought that was a, one of our meetings.
No, it's going to be special time meeting.
I just want that, I want that added on the calendar.
Uh, the, um-
I started working on next year's calendar, I just put it on hold once we started working on special time meeting.
Totally understandable, but, um, but to Mr. Weeks' point, not just the school committee, like, we do want to map out, like, uh, who, who do we have to talk to about all of these?
We have the police department update, we have the fire department update, highway department update, we have updates on here, so having the updates from the-
School committee.
School committee is, that should be on here somewhere.
And that may be, now, in this case, Mr. Simonick couldn't answer the question about how that decision, but there's no reason why it can't be either somebody from Hanson or the Chair of the school committee or Mr. Simonick, whoever it could be that would be able to, you know, give us an update or, you know, um, but then we'll, we'll have to have deliberations, um, so, um, okay. Um, any other dates that we want to add in there or subtract or are we kind of okay with this? I mean, this isn't like set in stone, so, you know.
We do have strategic planning things coming up, as a matter of fact, I saw one here. The strategic planning gets on 5/28, Camp Kewaunee.
Um-
Is that happening?
That is-
No?
No, that is not happening. Um, and we'll have to talk about that at some future date, so we want to-
Is that one, and, and there's, the other one is on 12/3.
Is that the, but that, we're having a normal meeting that, oh, okay.
We're having a normal meeting? We, I thought we might just do, because you talked about during an internal strategic planning meeting, that was just the board that we could do at that night.
I think that's a great idea. And what do you guys think about setting some goals? Um, and talking about goal, you know, our, like, what we want to achieve, what we'd like to see Ms. Green achieve, just, just set that aside for us. Um, that actually, looking at the, um, at the calendar, reminded me that we did not reorganize for wage and personnel.
Yeah, having that meeting happen.
Okay, great.
We have, we have this executive session on wage and personnel.
Okay, great. Um, any other updates? Any other suggestions? Okay. Um, okay, that's great. Um-
Well, do we want to do more wage and personnel meetings or are you fine with the five I have?
Why don't we wait till we get wage and personnel and then I guess we can figure that out? Um, okay. Um, do you want us to vote to approve this calendar?
As amended.
As amended, yep. Um, which, just to recap what the amendments were, we're adding the June 17th meeting. Um, and of course, it's contingent upon, um, what we're able to do with-
Stopping the, we're removing strategic planning section. Are we removing both of them? Is the December one also a factor?
No, just the May.
Just, just the, okay.
Just the May, um, and we're not removing it, we're kind of repurposing it to be just us.
Right, right, right.
Um, and then the, did, what was being changed in, um, no, that's it, June 17th? Okay, that's fine. Um, all right, I will entertain that motion.
Smooth.
Second. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Um, select board liaison assignments and discussion. Um, we've got a plethora of various assignments, et cetera, et cetera, um. And we've got some that I, I don't see necessarily listed here. Um, like, there's an MBTA, um, as in like the actual tracks, you know, the, the actual transportation, we need a liaison for that, and we need a liaison for Plymouth County, um. And then, is there anything that, um, people would, um, we don't have a liaison for Camp Quaney?
That we don't.
Or Parks and Fields, did anybody, did anybody want to change um, their liaison positions, or want to try something different, shake it up a little bit, um?
I'm happy with mine.
Okay, you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, do, we could use somebody for the Camp Quaney.
I could do Camp Quaney if you want me to.
You would be willing to do that?
Well.
When are, when are their meetings? I'm un, I'm not certain about that.
I think they're once a month on a Wednesday.
Right, well, you can get, have your people call our people, let us know, okay, check if you can. Um, and Parks and Fields, did somebody want to be our liaison to that? No? Okay.
I can do that if you want.
Okay, that would be great. Um. And, um, MBTA liaison, they basically talk about crossings and stuff like that, and it's all virtual, you don't have to actually show up on the call.
I, I use it, so I'll, I'll do that.
There you go.
Okay.
How would I get information?
I am a little concerned, well, we'll send the, we'll send your credentials to them. I'm a little concerned, Mr. Hill, about, um.
Volume?
No, no, but that you have, you're conservation, you're doing capital improvement, um, and I mean, do we still want to have both of you guys on capital improvement?
I'd like to come off of it.
You would, okay. Um, and I think it is important, we have at least one person on there, right?
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Yeah, so, are you okay with, yeah, okay. Um, and you're good with border health, Mr. Weeks, or?
Yeah, I mean, they, it's not a lot of outreach, it's not a lot of work.
Okay, all right.
If somebody else wants it, by all means.
Okay, um, and community preservation, that's kind of an easy one for me to liaise. Um, Conservation Commission, now, Mr. Hill, I know you're our liaison, um, I, and I want you to think about whether, we've got a person who applied, who would very much like to be on conservation, and he's a pretty good candidate, and I think Ms. McDowell can send you the application. Think about whether you might just want to be the liaison, but not a voting member, so that we might be able to engage another member of the community.
That might be, that might be, and there might be other things happening now, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, okay, all right.
But I, I am willing to, you know, if that's what makes the most sense.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Um, council on aging, economic development, um, energy, you're still good with that, Ed? Okay.
I am a full voting member on that also.
Yes, okay, so.
And I'm right there, we're looking for more members.
How many openings do you have? Did we announce that?
What is that?
How many openings do you have?
One.
You have one opening?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, can we add that to the announcements? Um, uh, finance committee, Mr. Weeks?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, fire department, Mr. Hill, you good on that?
Yep.
Um, High Street Park, there's no way you can get out of that, Mr. Weeks, good try.
I'm gonna be trying.
Good try.
I am gonna be trying though.
All right.
Um, and we, we are gonna be losing significant members.
You are?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, highway, um, library, McQuon, Parks and Fields. Planning, Mr. Hill, that makes sense with the, if you're gonna do the conservation, if you want to still do that. Um, and then I, so everybody's good with the rest of them. Um, I would like to be on the Plymouth County, um, I would like to be our Plymouth County liaison. And specifically, what, well, it's to, it's to the, um, so every town has the liaison, um, to Plymouth County. And it's where they, they meet and they talk about what the commissioners are thinking about. And specifically, I would like to be on that, because as you and Ed remember, when we were at that meeting, I suggested that I would like to regionalize pond management.
Yes.
Well, it's actually starting to get, it's starting to happen, and I would really like to be there in the front row, like, like cheering it on. Um, so, in fact, they just started reaching out to all of the towns and collecting the data about how many ponds, how many acres of ponds they have, what our budget is, so it's starting. Um, and they're meeting on like, I think, June sixth, and I really would like to be, so, will, will you guys entertain that?
We entertain it.
Stay moved.
All right, yeah, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
You left, what about Board of Appeals, that's.
Uh, Board of Appeals, did anybody want to throw their hat in the wind?
I just saw it hanging up there in the wind.
Was that you volunteering for that, Mrs. Rain?
Well, it depends, it all depends on when the meetings are.
They meet on Tuesdays, actually, so that, I think that's part of the issue, they usually meet the same night and roughly the same time we meet. So, it's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's why it ended up being, um, being empty.
Nobody wants to meet on Thursday, Thursday night, I can't do things.
All right, all right, um, and MBTA, Ed, you said you'd be willing to do that?
Yeah, I just need information.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve those liaisons and assignments.
You gotta take off transportation, doesn't, um, doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, yeah, well, okay, well, it's, yeah, it's just defunct, I think we, we, uh.
Just to clean it up.
Yep, yep. Um, all right, so to be, so did you get all of those changes, Ms. McDowell? Okay, um, so I will entertain a motion to approve, um, those assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, and, um, Ms. McDowell included a handy little select board liaison position job description, just in case people weren't clear about what their role would be. Um, okay, and annual appointments discussion, this should be pretty quick. Um, and I, what?
We did a motion a second, did we actually vote?
No.
Oh, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, annual appointments discussion, I think this should be pretty quick. Uh, we, as you know, at the end of the year, um, we will be reappointing, um, people that are on the various committees and boards. Um, what does this board want to look at to make sure that a member, or somebody should still be on a board or committee? For instance, I would suggest that we would want to make sure that A, the person had been sworn in for their last term, B, that they had done the ethics training. Um, what, what other things would we, I mean, I, 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 I'm hesitant to say anything about, um, you know, attendance, because people could have personal issues that might, you know, cause a problem. Um, is there anything else that we want to look at to make sure that we're just gonna, you know, we're gonna appoint? Uh, there was something else that we had, um.
I did talk with the town clerk about the ethics training.
Yeah.
They provide the link, or however they need for them to fix a test, it's all done through the state.
Thanks, guys.
So they do not have any control over whether people completed or not?
I understand she doesn't have control, but she does track who's done.
Yeah.
Oh, she doesn't, she can see who's done.
Yes. So could we get that information? Yeah, that's what we were looking for.
What is, yeah, what is this no, none, not, not, no, what is this on the front?
That might be about the, um.
That might be about who's been sworn in and who is not.
Yeah.
Not or no, what's the difference between not and no?
And then who's never sworn in.
I don't know, we didn't get our decoder ring on that, so.
I know, that's what I'm, I just, none, not, no, and none.
Not sworn in, uh, so this is just a, a little update of things. And again, we don't have to do anything about this tonight, but, um, I, uh, we just want a kind of a running list. Um, we've got some positions that are, um, gonna be opening, and, um, what can we do, um, Ms. Green and Ms. McDowell, to get the word out more broadly to people about the various committee and board openings that we have? Uh, because clearly announcing them in the middle of our meeting isn't doing the trick. Um, we literally have had, you know, very little, um, uptake on that, so. Um, what could, I, and you don't have to answer this tonight, but what type of a campaign could we wage um, to have people apply for these? And I think part of the hesitancy for people is they don't know what kind of time commitment is required, and I think they'd be quite pleased if they knew that some of these require an hour once a month, or two hours once a month. Like, it seems like so, so much of a commitment, you know, it just seems like awful, so is there a way for us to kind of think about, um, you know, what is the committee, what do they do? And what's the time commitment? It's kind of like what you'd be putting out there for a job description if you were doing it, like, you know?
We've been talking about doing that on the updated website, that, to have all the pages be similar in layout, so they'll have the same mission, the same requirements.
Time description.
Yeah.
Okay, but, uh, but we've got openings now, and business that has to be done now, we can't wait for the new.
Well, we can start working on them now, so we can.
So if you, yeah, you'll have the contents and you could just put it into the new website, that's amazing. Um, so, um, anyway, you guys can get back to us on when you might be able to do that, but I, I think even if we just did a piecemeal, and, you know, like, just start, work, work your way down the list of the things we've got openings on. Do a little job description, here's what they do, here's how often they meet, here's when they meet. You know, here's a link to, back to the town website of like minutes, if you really want to figure out what they do and get a sense of, you know, what they talk about. And then, you know, I think that will help, and if we get, you know, nobody applying, then, you know, we know that it's just because people don't want to apply, but I don't think that's the case, because I have found people reach out, and when you talk to them about stuff, you're like, hey, yeah, you should, like, I'll say, yeah, you should apply to such and such, um. You know, we, Ian and I were in a conversation with the lady a couple of weeks ago, and I was like, oh, you should, you should just apply, and she's like, well, how do I do that? I'm like, well, there's an application, I'll send it to you. Um, so, and again, that should be, a link to the volunteer application should be there, so that's something you guys feel like you could get cracking on?
What if, what if you did a mailing?
A mailing to everybody?
Yeah, to everybody in the town.
And just did like a little, say, like, with the volunteer opportunities?
God, you could probably do it for a thousand dollars for the whole town.
Um, it's a radical idea, I like it, um.
The thing is, everything goes up on a website.
Didn't you talk about putting it in, um, the tax bill?
Yes. Yeah, can we talk about, can we talk to Lisa Clark about putting a blurb in there? Um, and maybe what we'd want to do is create a QR code, um, to the, um, the volunteer application. And on that page, we could have a list of all of the openings, and then on the, in the tax bills, we could have a QR code and a link for those people that don't do QR codes. Um, and, and then people would just get connected and, and, uh, go back and take a look at what's open, does that all make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the thing with the website, what do we got, eight thousand voters in the town of Hanson? About eight thousand? Can't even get twenty-five percent of them to show up, what makes you think they're going to the website?
That's a good point. Oh, well, that's not gonna be our, we're gonna do the express, we're gonna do, you know, like, town hall sign, like, we're gonna have a full court press, like, yeah, campaign, a recruitment campaign. Um, 'cause we don't want to be the only ones having fun, um, we want other people to have fun too. That's a, look at you, okay, you are, you're firing on all engines tonight, I, I like it. Um, I think that's a great idea, I'd love to have like a volunteer table, um, where maybe people could just be there and say, oh, you want to know what this committee does? This is what they do, here's an application, I love it. Um, any other ideas? Okay, um. All right, that's great, we don't need to vote on that, I just thought we'd have a conversation. Adopt town of Hanson financial policy, um, Ms. Green.
Okay, um. As the board of members, our library is applying for grant. And a requirement of the grant is that, um, some type of financial policies is included with the grant application. So, town treasurer, collector Lisa Clark, myself, um, put a draft together, um, in our office, Emily went through, because we did pull some of this from other towns. Um, and just basically got rid of all the other towns and, uh, names and, and, and inputted Hanson. We also basically molded this to fit Hanson. And what you have before you is a draft. Now, this is with town council, so they are looking through this. Um, however, the grant application, I believe, is, is due by the end of May. So if the board would possibly consider adopting this for the purpose of being included with the grant application only. That way, we can include this with the grant application while town council finishes their review of it. Um, and then it would come back before the board to implement for townwide.
I would not be okay with us saying that this is okay for our grant application. I would want to know town council had, had opined on it. I don't mind taking a vote contingent upon town council, not making any major changes. But I'm not okay just throwing this with the application without town council signing on it.
Contingent upon town council. Um, I'm trying to see if we can, if we can get them to, you know, they've had a lot of town meetings and stuff like that, and they do have it, so. Uh, we're just waiting on them to do their review of it.
All right, so.
The dates stay the same, it says this policy was adopted September of twenty twenty-one, isn't that?
No, that, 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 that'll come out, because I, that probably was, that was probably in the same, they, you know, the prior.
I see that a lot.
That was the town we borrowed it from, Ed, they adopted this in twenty twenty-one.
Do this retroactive.
Good for them.
Yeah, and we, we've been, we've been working on, on this for months to, to, um, go through it all. You know, there is still, still some things to do.
Yeah. I agree with Laura, we have to be contingent, I don't feel, because there's too many things in here that.
Yeah, what does the highlighted text mean? Is there anything specific about that? There's a few areas of this highlighted text. Is that stuff that we changed from other towns?
Well, yeah, like, I see, I see city auditor in here, which clearly we do not have.
So some of those will come out, so if it's highlighted on here, there is still some updates in that particular area that we need to do, you know, take care of, like, will you see city auditor, that needs to come out, so there, there are still some modifications that are happening. Um, what Lisa Clark did was, for some reason on her end, she wasn't, uh, able to, to, um, delete certain words, like the city auditor. So what she did was highlighted them, so either myself or town council will go in and take that part out.
And this is due by the end of May?
Well, the grant application is due by the end of May.
And we're meeting next week, though, so how much more cleaned up do you think this could be by next week? Because it's a little bit of a, um, hodgepodge here.
We, we, we have to get it done, because it has to go on with the grant application.
No, I understand, but we're meeting next Tuesday, which is before the end of the month. How much more in shape can you get it by next Tuesday?
So Kate has it now?
Yeah, can you press on Kate, and can you get it cleaned up, and then we can take a vote next week on it? And if, you know, if Kate still hasn't, um, been able to wrap it up and just, you know, I understand Kate's had all the town meetings and all the town she serves, and I'm sure she's been running around like a maniac. Um, but, um, if we can't do it, then we could still do a contingent vote on town council, but, um, to get by you a couple of days till the end of the month, but, um, if you could just press on her, um, because this is this isn't a casual thing. This is a rather, I mean, this is our financial policy and objective, it's not.
It also talks about, um, taxes and liens and penalties and, and it puts numbers and percentages and, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know enough about this, you know, it's a state, federal, if it's a town thing, I need more on the numbers.
We've never had one of these in the past?
No.
No, and it has come up in our audit, um, that we, um, what our, our auditors, I mean, we usually get great audits, but this is one recommendation they've made a couple of years in a row, I believe, so we'll at least be able to check that box off, um, but also help Karen Stoffer with her library grant application.
Oh, just for the library?
Yes, she needs this, it's required piece, that's what's driving the deadline.
It wouldn't qualify as more?
Well, um, she actually, there is a possibility that, um, this could fall under MBTA, she did not get a, um, firm answer. It, it basically said it could potentially be implemented, be impacted.
Well, there's speculation, honestly, that they're not even gonna stop at the three original programs plus the thirteen, that they could even be working on other state money that we get, so.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll have a much better, much more cleaned up, um, version of this, and, and hopefully, um, have town councils review by Tuesday.
All right, great, so we'll, we'll defer making a motion on that then. Um, and then that brings us to one-day liquor licenses. I will entertain a motion to approve, um, six nine twenty-four James Squire graduation party.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Fantastic, that brings us to committee updates, I've got nothing on Economic Development Committee, Joe?
There's a bunch of stuff on High Street, but it's getting late, I think, uh, the biggest thing is that we're, we're gonna be losing some members. Um, they've made their, um, announcements at yesterday's meeting, um, so we're probably gonna be down two or three.
Oh, wow.
Two or three members, um, it's, it's becoming a lot of work, so.
Okay.
Um, just keep that in mind. We also, I think, need more folks for the Recreation Commission, just to jump ahead really fast, because we did adopt that as, like, the maintenance and the governance quality, uh, uh, commission. And the, because they don't really have any members there, it's still, it's falling in the High Street to like, come up with maintenance plans and whatnot, which is outside the scope of what we're supposed to be doing. So I'm gonna make an initial plug that we need Recreation Commission members, so that, that, that way they can do their mission and vision of helping not only create recreation, but take over the maintenance of some issues at High Street.
So if you're out there and you're passionate about, I want X, Y, or Z to happen up at Plymouth, you know, the High Street, um, park? We've got openings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and McQuon property reuse, I, at our next meeting, I would like to talk about, um, and I would like the proposal from you, Ms. Green, on what type of a, um, forum we could have, um, that's gonna be soliciting feedback um, from a wide swath of citizens in Hanson, on what do we want McQuon, the prior McQuon property to be when we grow up? Um, how are we going to use that? Um, how do we best use it for the largest number of people, cost effectively, all that, but we need a brainstorming, and we need some type of public forum for that. Um, and then, I don't have anything else, did anybody else have any burning things, and are we gonna get popping on the highway thing again?
The highway thing is really contingent on what you're gonna do, also, in a way, what you're gonna do with, with McQuon.
Okay.
And also, we gotta get past all this, I think, before we can.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
And we have our, we still, we have an interim highway guy still.
I mean, that's valid.
Do we still have an interim highway guy?
Yes, we still have him, um.
The reason I'm asking is, didn't, didn't we have someone in mind? Is that gentleman not interested in the job anymore?
No, the job's posted, and he has moved on to greener pasture, so, um, he's not gonna be, um, applying for that job. Um, so, uh, yeah, okay.
We need to have the, the, the real person in place, I think, before we make more plans.
Yep, good point. Um, I do want to talk at, not tonight, but about the McQuon property reuse, because I went to the firehouse feasibility study meeting, at which there was some discussion about whether or not that footprint was going to work for the future, like, AKA thirty-year-old firehouse, and it appears that although they could make it work, it would be way more costly to do it there than it would be to relocate it, which then called into question, well, what other properties do we have? And then they're called into question, McQuon versus the, where the highway building is now, and there's all kinds of now balls in the air trying to be juggled, so. We'll leave you there with that cliffhanger, um, and then that brings us to Town Administrative Report, Ms. Green.
Um, Madam Chair, Nice Chair, Members of the Board. Um, so again, um, we had town elections on Saturday, May eighteenth, so I would like to recognize our town clerk, Beth Sloan. Assistant Town Clerk, Jean Kelly, the election workers, Charlie Baker, Hanson Highway Staff, Fire Police, for all their help, um, with town elections. Um, again, there's a lot of collaborative work, labor that goes into the preparing for, um, and holding town elections, so again, um, kudos to that, um, that group for, um, holding successful elections. Uh, we are preparing for a special town meeting, uh, we talked about this in the open meeting, Monday, June seventeenth at the middle school. Um, so we have put in the request for the school, um, we're putting together the communication plan. So, we have put in the request for the school, we're putting together the communication plan, and we'll be basically talking about that from now until June 17th, special town meeting. Highway director position is posted, information's available on the website, resumes and cover letters are due June 3rd. It was in the express this past week, it will be in the express next week. We do have two applications. Somebody that had expressed a lot of interest in the position, unfortunately, we can't compete with the salaries for other towns, so we're gonna have to get used to that. Tony DePrayis and myself completed the scopes of work and budgets for the earmarks that we have for the town. They submitted them by the due date, which was May 15th. And I completed and emailed all the earmark documents, which included the contracts, signatory listings, and agreements for the earmarks. So, those have all been submitted, so we now just basically await for the state to sign off, and we'll start getting some of that money, so we can start the projects, which include the Mon Ponset Playground, Camp Kawani Playground, and beach renovations, small business assistance, and the Plymouth County site renovations, Bonny House renovations, and Boardwalk. So, all of those earmarks have been submitted, so we can spend that money as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Hanson, the Hanson Recreessor position was posted today, cover letters, resumes are June, again, due June 3rd. It's on the website, it'll be in the Whitney Hanson Express next Thursday. It is on the MMA website, so it is out there. And I did have vacation planned for next week, but I will be here for Tuesday to take care of everything, but I will be off the rest of the week, because I am going away. And that concludes my town administrator report for today.
Did you want to give us an update on the Memorial Day Parade? I thought Mr. Gombachus was perhaps gonna be here, or we'd have some kind of a discussion about that.
So, basically, the itinerary that we had sent is still intact. Let me just pull that up.
Is it basically the same as last year?
It's basically the same, the meeting spot is gonna be the Indian Head School. 9:45 is gonna be the gathering, when he starts putting everybody together, the ceremony at the school in the front, where the flag will be lowered to have staff with ceremony.
Is it gonna rain?
The parade will take place down Indian Head, Liberty Street. They will stop in front of Town Hall to lay the wreath, the widows will lay the wreath. They will continue to Fernhill Cemetery, I guess there is the Civil, by the Civil Memorial, I'm sorry, Civil Memorial out here at Town Hall. Then they will continue to Fernhill Cemetery, where they will have the opening prayer, reading of the Governor's Proclamation, the guest speaker, reading of the veterans' names who have passed away this past year, and then a closing prayer. So, all of that is, still remains the same, so none of that is changed.
So, who's planning on being there? Because I want to know who's willing to do the laying of the wreaths with the, well, there's, there's up at the cemetery, and then there's with the widows, too. Are you guys all gonna be there?
They're gonna be.
Is everybody gonna be there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. And then you'll be at the parade? Yeah, and then...
Well, walk-in parade?
Yeah, okay. So, who would like to lay the wreaths with the widows?
I'll do it.
I know, I felt like you and I should do it.
I never did it before.
I thought it would be kind of cool for, like, yeah, okay. All right, and who would like to do it at the cemetery?
I'd like the widows.
Do you guys want to do cemetery?
Sure, I'll do whatever, whatever.
All right, great. And David's gonna have his hands full, anyway, because you've got the whole thing at the American Legion later, so you're doing your part, and then some, and you've done your part, and then some. Okay, so any further discussion?
It's gonna be a Girl Scout troop and a Boy Scout troop also.
That's adorable.
And the Whitney Hanson Band.
Oh, really?
We are having the Whitney Hanson Band.
I think he said he did secure the Whitney Hanson Band.
Okay, so why do I feel like we've made it?
I had heard that there was a National Guard Band.
Oh.
We'll have to confirm that with them.
Also, did Melissa Clark and Ron Clark get in touch with you? They were very much interested in participating in the parade. Melissa, aka Catwoman, aka The Grinch, I don't think she was planning on dressing up in those outfits, but she, she had reached out to me, and I told her to give you a call.
Yeah, we, well, we're watching the weather closely. Unfortunately, they are forecasting rain that day, so that will make a difference.
Is that gonna be rain or shine?
I believe the parade will be rain or shine, but whether the cars will be in it will be, will...
If it's raining, the cars are not gonna be there.
If it's raining, the cars won't be there, so...
Now, Joe may want to think about, in the past, when it was torrential downfall, we did not do the parade, we did an abbreviated version of, you know, like the read, of the ceremonial type of stuff, but did it at the Indian Head School. He may want, if it's gonna be torrential downpour, he may want to give the schools a call, make some kind of a contingency plan, just so he's got a Plan B, you know, kind of a thing that he could do.
Yeah, we, I can talk to them, and we'll watch the weather closely.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm hoping that that changes to, you know, good weather, that to me.
Anything can change. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to go to executive session pursuant to open meeting law chapter 38, section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator, Deputy Police Chief. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares litigation discussions. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares highway administrative. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law chapter 38, section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes not to be released, May 14th, 2024. I will entertain that motion, and we will not be coming out in open session.
So moved.
Okay, roll call vote. Oh, did...
Well, we're going to wage a personnel...
It's technically a different body, so I think it still works.
Yep. Okay, sorry, we were stopped mid, mid vote there.
Aye.
Okay.
He aye'd.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Ms. McDowell.